Got Carson.
Out there, nobody wants to come out. They were ready for, they all had their shorts unpacked and their long stuff put away and then it snowed again.
Yeah. First one that walks in has got to say the prayer, Carson. I'm teasing, I already asked Sam. How you doing?
Good.
How are you? Thanks, man. Yours is too.
Oh yeah, you guys are twinders.
Carson, what you doing, man?
Carson, I went to.
Oh, hi.
Went to lunch or dinner sometime the other day at La Bia and I'm like, nah, I should have called Carson.
That's right.
Hi Nicole.
Yeah. Gold star. We're rolling commissioner.
Ready? We'd like to welcome everyone out to our Iron County Commission meeting this Monday, the twenty eighth day of April two thousand twenty five. We'll begin this meeting with a prayer offered by Sam Waddell. And then following the prayer, Commissioner Robinson will lead us in the pledge.
Our Father in heaven, we're thankful for this beautiful day, grateful to live where we live, to have the blessings that we do. We're grateful to recognize thy hand in our life in every aspect from when we go to work to when we go home to the silver linings that are seen throughout. We ask today, Father, thou bless us with thy spirit here that we can do good work, discuss the county business and be able to make it progress. We're thankful for all that thou has given us and we offer this prayer humbly in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you very much. Let's go ahead and look at approving the minutes. What was the date almost?
It was April fourteenth.
I got the, I got the supplement glasses, I can notice on that.
Piece of glasses? I got some in my truck, I can go get some.
I think I got some in my truck. Like I got no glasses and on my pen.
Probably scratched up and they roll around and my.
That's mine too.
And they get all scratched up.
That's how mine are.
So any comments on the minutes?
What was the date again, John?
April fourteenth. So I'll entertain a motion.
I moved to approve the, I moved to approve the minutes of the April fourth, April fourteenth meeting.
Second to.
It's been moved to second and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, thank you. Uh, let's go ahead and approve the claims for payment from April first two thousand twenty five to April twenty seventh two thousand twenty five.
It's been changed, but I'll make a motion to approve claims for payment from April fourteenth to April twenty seventh.
Okay.
Second.
Moved in second to pay the bills, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. All right. We'll now go to our departmental reports, start with Carson, our assessor.
Couple things that want to make you aware of, primary, well, the, the DMV, as you know, the, the, the bill that was proposed didn't pass, but I just kind of want to give you a little bit of insight and perspective as to what the challenges are that we're facing in Iron County at the DMV. Just in the last two years, the, the number of transactions, it used to be that most of the transactions that they did at the DMV were renewals and those are kind of simple. Renewals largely are done online, not exclusively, but most people, you know, renew online and they do a ton of title work now. But the number of transactions per day on average exceeds a hundred transactions per person in Cedar. And so we're, we've, we finally had to have, had to tell the, the dealers in St. George to stop sending their dealer work just because we couldn't accommodate it and accommodate the public. So we're not doing St. George dealer work anymore.
Why would they do that, Carson?
They do it just because we get it done quickly and, and so, but it's, you know, with the.
The curse of good service, is that?
Yeah, it is a curse of good service actually, because it just gets done really quickly. They're really good at what they do and get it back to them quickly and in, in Washington County, they have to wait and they don't like that, so. But it's, you know, they're on, I mean, last week, I think they had a day where they had six hundred people that they served and, I mean, even Parwin, which we've only averaged eight, eight to twelve transactions a day historically, just in the last year has not quite doubled, but you know, we're, we're almost doing twenty, eighteen to twenty a day on average. So we're, we're stretched pretty thin. When you, I mean, they're, they're just, in Cedar, they are just sunup to sundown, either doing dealer work, there's just not any, a second of downtime and it's, it's going to come to a point as we grow that we're going to, you know, we probably already should have added someone, but they will need, unless we're, you know, willing to let the public just kind of, you know, shoulder a little bit of that.
Do we have room to add another person in that office?
If we close off the, the one kind of breezeway space and add a little, a desk there, we could add maybe a part-time person.
Just have to go through the door to get, get in.
Yeah. But Tara's asked for another part-time person over the last year or so there, just because they're so bombarded that, that, that it's kind of become a, just a challenge even for them to go to lunch, you know, it's, it's really a tough thing for, for them to leave just because they have so many people and. But it's just something to kind of be aware of, there's a real strain on, on the Cedar DMV and the service provided there. There's a lot more title work, there's a lot more transactions, they're averaging a ton and it's just, it's, it's a challenge that probably needs to be addressed at some point. And of course, that's a budget issue and just wanted to make you aware of that, so. Uh, the other thing I wanted to talk about is Brayden Beaumont, you know, he's been here almost six years and just, I think he started in two thousand nineteen, eighteen, nineteen and just passed his licensing test, his test for licensing, so he will be a licensed appraiser, but just to put that in perspective, that's five years of hours and work and, and, you know, to, it's monumental. If you think about any other license in the state to get a license, the, my own license took me five years, four and a half years, it's a little, it's a little bit of a more streamlined process to, to get licensed, but, but yeah, Brayden just got licensed, Latonya soon to follow and we'll have a couple more after that. We got Chris there now as a, as a trainer and Brian is also a trainer and so trying to get some of these people licensed, but, but it is a huge process, a huge undertaking to, to get a license, so kudos to Brayden. He's super diligent, super hardworking, they all are, but that is really an incredible feat to, to get to the point where you can pass a test, which is difficult to pass. I think the last person was Kyle and that was maybe eight years ago, so.
Is Kevin a licensed appraiser as well?
Kevin's a licensed trainee, he's a, he has a broker's license and has taught appraisal classes, but not, not, not there, but he's pretty close to. And then, uh, last thing was just the, last year we had obviously lots of challenges with the, the tax role and Puma and this year we anticipate being done about a week, week or so early with, with our tax role, so hopefully we won't have any issues there. Talk to Luke and let him know that we'd be, we'd be rolling on time, so hallelujah for that, but, uh, yeah, and in terms of our budget, we're just pretty much on, on par with what we were last year. The only, uh, the only slight strain is just we have a little bit of an additional education burden and so from the state, we have to, have to do a few more classes than we normally did, but that's, we budgeted for that and so we should be good, so. If you have any questions?
So the bill that you worked on this year that didn't, you said did not pass, was that to have the state step up and pay us more for what we do?
Yeah, I'm not sure, it passed, it went out of the senate and then for whatever reason in the house it got kiboshed, I'm not sure why or what.
Do we make enough, like if we were to add a part-time, another part-time employee, do we make enough to justify that? Do we pay their salary and benefits?
Well, we don't take in enough from the state, you know, the, the contract we have with the state is like twenty something years old and so, I mean, it doesn't even pay for our current administrative.
And that's what you were trying to do with that bill, right?
Yeah. So, yeah, no, we don't.
Was that SB fifty nine?
Uh huh, yeah. And so.
Did it die in, did they, did it die in committee? Did it, did it just not, did it get voted down?
You know, I, I don't understand why it got voted, it got voted down, but I don't know why and nobody else seems to quite understand why.
Because every choice is to say, hey, you guys come and get it, take it back or.
Basically, yeah.
Have that choice, right?
We have that choice, they've sort of just indicated that they would just shut it down because they don't have facility to move into, they don't have the, you know, there's not a, they, they would force everyone to go to St. George and, you know, that's.
That's crazy, they won't step up.
Yeah, so it's a little bit challenging, so I, you know, I'm going to work on that this year to apply a little bit more, I guess I need to go meet with more of the legislators.
Rex and Carl in support of that?
They were, yeah, it's just, and, and there was a lot of support for it and then it just, you know, it's one of those things where you have no clue why.
It could have been that they just, they had eight, over eight hundred bills this year.
Yeah. Could be a lot of different things, but. Yeah, that's, that's what's going on, so.
Well, let us know what we can do to help you.
Seemed like UAC was quite supportive of that bill.
Yeah, they were super supportive, Brandy did a couple interviews with us that were broadcast and publicized for the legislators to watch, but it didn't pass, so.
And I, I had conversations with UAC during, you know, back and forth, they called and, and they said, guy, we, they said, we feel like we haven't worked out, you guys are going to be happy with it and then.
I remember having those conversations, yeah.
Yeah.
And it went down.
Yeah, well, we, I mean, in Iron County, we need the help, so we, we're going to try again this next year and might need to enlist you guys, help us to get that redrafted and submitted and passed, so. Okey dokey, thank you.
Thanks, Carson.
Thank you.
Let's see, let's go to IT.
Morning. Morning commissioners, good to be here and chat with you. Um, I don't have a whole lot, but I thought it'd be fun to kind of throw out some numbers for you, just kind of end of year numbers from last year, see now I missed my report last time, so it kind of gets you caught up on that a little bit and then you guys can fire away and ask any questions you want of me. But in, uh, twenty twenty four, we, we had three thousand eight hundred seventy seven work orders completed, which was an average of just over three hundred and twenty per month, so that kept us getting busy. This year, we're actually a little bit lower on pace on that, we're averaging about two hundred and ninety, it's just over that, um, work orders for this year. Um, we do, we're staying extremely busy, we do have currently, which is good and bad both, um, we got two hundred and fifty currently open work orders that we're working on with our staff, so you can see kind of how busy we are in trying to prioritize those to get them done in the, in a proper order, which not everybody agrees on, so we try to keep everybody happy that way. Um, some of the other numbers that are kind of interesting, um, pulled a report just the other day for this, this is for the last seven days, um, this is how many connections that were blocked coming into our network in the last seven days, we had eight million eight hundred and seventy five thousand, two hundred and ninety blocked connections coming through. So you can see that we're getting, we're getting hammered. We did have one that was an actual ransomware that came through, um, but we're happy to know that we, we caught that, quarantined it and it never did affect our system, so.
Good job.
We're really glad to be able to, to do that. We do receive, we love working with the state, um, SIAK, um, they're really, really good. We get daily notifications from them and so we're always updating everything in the background just to make sure that we're staying, staying, staying safe and protected on those, so we really appreciate that part. Um, as far as some of the bigger projects we've had over the last just three, three, four, five months is, um, you'll see a lot of the websites been updated, Jaeger's been working really hard on that, he's been trying to get with most of the, um, departments, departments are just as busy as we are, so we totally get it, but we've got those kind of updated, the fair, the sheriff's site and then the main county site are the three main ones that you'll see have a big facelift and we're still trying to massage those and make them, you know, as good as we can. It's kind of hard to cater to everybody's needs on that, you can see the homepage, noticed over the last about month, the buttons have increased a lot on the homepage, which we're hoping to not clutter it up too much, but it is very important for the people to get the information they need, so we recognize that as well. And then the other, the big one too that we're seeing a lot, Kendall, I've actually had to kind of tell him to slow down because he's, just doesn't have enough hours in the day to get everything done, but he's currently got the parcels, um, he's got applications for the road department, the zoning with Terry back there and then the assessor's office, he's, he's kind of written house applications for every one of those and he's trying to manage those and then he's trying to add some more, I know weeds he's been trying to work on as well and a few others and I've, I've. Yeah, the May tax sale map, he's been doing that, so there's, and there's quite a, quite a bit that he's doing and I've just, I've told him, I'm like, especially with the weeds, Amber's probably going to be really upset with me, but I told him, I was like, you're going to have to put that one on hold, it's like we got too much other stuff going on that we'll have to tackle that one when we actually get some time and he's, he's available for it, so. That just kind of paints a picture of where we're at and what we're doing. I'm pretty excited, we don't have a whole lot of downtime, which means that we're staying on top of stuff in the background that you guys don't see. Uh, once we start having downtimes, when I start to worry, that means that, that we're not staying on top of stuff like we should be, so. But yeah, that's kind of my report, budget looks pretty good, we are a little bit concerned about tariffs, um, we've noticed computer cost per computer's gone up about two hundred dollars per computer, so we'll hopefully either mitigate and not replace some computers or hopefully the tariffs will go away a little bit and we can afford some or find some alternatives, we're kind of looking around everywhere on those, but kind of is what it is, we'll move forward, so.
So speaking of ransomware, I'm on the behavioral health board for Five County. We got hit, hit last year with that.
Yeah.
Hit hard and, um, they wanted a million dollars and we didn't, we didn't give them anything, but they, I mean, they had our information, we, we rebuild everything, it was a mess, but, um, you know, they got access to all of our data and.
It's, it's really been interesting over the years to watch how ransomwares developed, like when it first came out, they would hit you, you'd make the payment and it wasn't millions, it was thousands.
Right.
You make the payment and everything is just great, no big deal. And then they started to get to the point where it's like, okay, well, we got you once, we'll leave this piece of malware in there, now we'll get you a second time. And then they started finding out that everybody's getting insured and it's like, well, you're insured for four million, we want four million.
Right.
And so they were, they're really smart with what they're doing and boy, when they get in, yeah, they lock you down, it's, you start over and you hope it doesn't affect your backups, which, you know, we.
Because it can be in your backups, right? And they can just trigger it?
Mm-hmm. That's the sad, that's the hard part, the hardest part is to identify when that ransomware gets in there, because it'll sit dormant for.
Can you find it, is it hard to find?
Uh, with the software and everything, it's getting a lot easier to find, but you, usually what, when you find it is when they actually trigger it and so then you start seeing an executable run and then that's when it, our software will notify us and then we have to start going in there and blocking and shutting things down to make sure it doesn't just start spreading, so. We actually, um, we've gone through a couple, we had, um, Sista come in and this is about six months ago or so and we had him come in and prior to that, it was about two years ago and they actually had them run analysis on our system and he was telling us about how bad we were going to be and everything else and I was pleasantly surprised of how well we had done in blocking incoming traffic, so we had, I think in all the scans he ran, I think he identified two different areas, ports and things that we needed to block that weren't. Most people were up in the hundreds on those, so. So we, we are really, like, we, we've probably got some sad public, especially anybody that's outside the United States, I know Nicole deals with them, yeah, they, from New Zealand, usually there's somebody from New Zealand, which unfortunate, you know, they can't pay their taxes online because we block them and I'll be quite honest, I'm not going to open it up either. Once I open that one, then it just opens, opens it up for a lot more stuff, so. Those individuals there where I feel sorry for them that they can't just make the easy payment online, which would be really nice, but there is other avenues and Nicole's great to work with on that too, but it keeps us safe, but yeah, the ransomware is a, it's a tough one. Wish they would spend their time doing get these instead of, instead of trying to hit us all, but.
Any other questions?
Oh, thank you.
Uh, Nicole?
Thank you, madam.
We still have our out of.
Thank you.
We just give it for them, so.
Thanks.
We'd rather not have.
Thank you.
Oh, I better put my eyes on. You all have your handouts this morning? So the first one I gave you is just our product sales, so it just shows, of course, we're in our quiet time of collecting, um, but we've still, since the first of the year, collected over seven million, so we're busy doing personal property right now. Um, three years ago, we started helping and collecting the personal property and that's going really good and Nicole is super good to work with. Um, Teresa and she's been helping a little bit and learning how to even put the value on a little bit this year, so that's been good for her, she's been super willing to jump in and try to learn and be helpful and hopefully, um, that takes a little bit of pressure off Teresa, I know she's super busy right now, but, um, but we're doing really good that far. The next one is just the tax money that comes to the county, of course, super low at this point, eight hundred and thirty six, this month will go up a little bit, we've been getting some of our personal property payments in, so that should help out a little bit and then our pool cash is just our overall, where we are in our bank accounts, um, we're still nice and strong, um, doing really well, we're earning, um, around two hundred and forty thousand a month in interest with our bank balances, so that's super helpful to all of our funds, we share it with all the funds. Based on what the fund balance is, so that's been super helpful the last few years for the county. Our PTF rate is still pretty decent, last time I reported it was at four seven three, it's down to four four eight, but it's holding pretty good. Um, so far this year, just in our one general PTIF, we've earned six hundred and seventy six thousand in interest. Uh, Morton, we have some long-term investment with them and we've earned about two hundred and forty one thousand. Our outstanding taxes are doing pretty good, um, we're at two point five million, last year at this time, we were at thirteen point five million, so we're glad to see that coming down and we're trying to work really hard to keep that going in the right direction. Our May tax sale, we started with a hundred and nine and we are down to sixty four today. We have four homes, um, that are still on, a couple are, are still in the process of paying, but we, one of them isn't really a home, it's just kind of a building, it's here in Parwin, but a really nice property, but we just can't find the people, we think they're probably deceased. So, um, but we're, we're still trudging along and trying to track them down the best that we can, we have one guy who's incarcerated in our jail that his place is going to tax sale, so we did have Shalon notify him and verified that he's been informed, so we're not sure what will happen with that one, we're a little bit nervous about that one just because, um, of the situation, situation and the people rotating in and out of there, so I'm a little bit worried about someone buying that and what they may encounter when they go to the property, so we may have to work a little bit on that one, but. Um, I've been working the last couple of weeks a lot on our PIDs. So far Cedar City has approved nine and a lot of them are just collecting a special assessment, those I'm not super worried about, they're paying those as they're selling the lot, but right now we have three that will be collecting a tax levy and when you say, um, like they're approving them at six mils with Cedar City and they can approve them up to fifteen mils and they, I think they think, oh, six mils, that's, that's not terrible, that's not that bad, but I looked at Commissioner Robinson's house, so if you were to get a, or to pay a PID, a couple of them are up in Shirts Canyon, so your taxes last year were two thousand three hundred and seventy eight, if you had a PID with six mils, it would add one thousand eight hundred and thirty four dollars and your total tax bill would go up to four thousand two hundred and thirteen. So it nearly doubles what their taxes are, I, I hope they understand this, I hope Cedar City understands the tax impact it will have. I did call and talk to their treasurer last week and sent them some PowerPoints and information on the PIDs and what it does to the taxes based on the value of someone's home. And also talked to them a little bit about there needs to be some education. Um, one of the PID developers, I tracked him down last week, we had a conversation, he has no idea how the taxing cycle works. He was like, oh, I think we're just going to add that tax as we sell the lots, it's not how that works. When you levy the tax, it goes to the whole area, so I just talked to them and I think there needs to be some education, whether Cedar City starts doing that or if they get them in contact with me so that they are aware really of how the taxing cycle works and, uh, the dates that they have to have that information to Luke for him to get the tax rates to the tax commission, so. I feel like lots of education needs to happen, he was super shocked by everything that I told him, so, oh, we need to work harder on making sure people really understand what's happening with these public infrastructure districts, so. Um, my budget is super good, of course, I love to wait and spend all my money at the end, but so far we're doing really well and my people work super hard, they don't complain, they just get in and do whatever they're asked to do, try to be kind and good to the public, who sometimes is not kind and good to us, so, but they really do their best and I appreciate them so much, but. Any questions or?
Thank you.
No, thanks.
Uh, Commissioner Robinson, you want to go?
Sure. Had several meetings last couple of weeks, uh, two at the jail site, going over that and seeing the progress on that and discussing the lifting that up and making sure we're getting good compaction on that to make sure that we have a good, solid foundation for that building. Had another meeting with the twenty-five year outlook for the fairgrounds and went over part of that plan and unfortunately I missed the link on that and on a second meeting and was not able to get in on that and my email was messed up and I couldn't sign in on that meeting, so I need to get with Jamie today on that one. Had a meeting out at Iron Springs Resort about the inland port and talking about the possibilities or the future of the inland port and what, what's going to happen in that area, out in the Iron Springs area. Possibilities or the future of the inland port and what, what's going to happen in that area, out in the Iron Springs area. Had Congresswoman Malloy there with us, so that was very good. Um, a lot of the Cedar City Mayor and Council was there. And one question I didn't bring up at the time that I wish I should have, or I wish I would have brought it up was. What commitment do they have or are going to have from UP? Because my personal experience with being a customer of UP is less than spectacular. And so until UP decides to make some serious commitments, um, that's, that's where I see the bottleneck of that project. And that's about it. Okay, thank you.
Um, just looking at my calendar, I know I, I know I was on the phone a lot with different issues over the last couple of weeks that aren't in my calendar and I don't remember specifically what a lot of those were. Um, uh, a lot of my, a lot of my last, uh, two weeks was taken up in a, in a jury trial. As well as, uh, a mental health conference that I attended, um, not county related. So, um, I did attend the inland port update, uh, with all of us. That's the only thing I have in my calendar. No, I know I did a lot more, but I don't remember what was what.
Um, Commissioner Robinson mentioned the jail. We, we continued our meetings. We, uh, Platte and Platt got the final, uh, set of drawings to us where we, like Ken said, we raised that building about two and a half feet. We just want to make sure we don't ever have water problems. So we raised that building up a little. It's going to cost us a little bit, a little bit of money, but we feel like that's a really important decision to have those buildings up high. Cause historically there has been some water go through that, 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 uh, property. Uh, Horox is a company, an engineering company that we hired to be a liaison between us and the Union Pacific Railroad. Um, they've, uh, we've, we've got the final drawings to cross the railroad with our sewer line, ten inch sewer line. They'll bore that and we're just waiting for approval on that. So Intellex, our excavators at the jail can complete that. Just we, just a note for the public, we have the five mile grand opening this Thursday, one, right? And, um, that'll be exciting. Um. I, there was a question on social media about, hey, why don't we make that an overnight camping? But I, and I texted Alm, I couldn't remember, but he said that there used to be overnight, but they, the Forest Service kind of said that it was too dangerous with all the flooding that had and. But maybe we could revisit that now that we have a new director.
Yeah, it, it spoke to, um, the, the, the real reason was the trouble with the water. I, I spoke with Maria last week about it.
Oh, okay.
The, the problem is to have, it was, it became cost prohibitive to have a water system properly. And so they're discussing what they're going to do, but without, without water, you have to.
It's going to be a big deal.
That's right.
Yeah, that's true. I'd forgotten about the water issue.
That was, yeah, she, she was expressing some frustration to me about that, so.
Yeah, that's, that's good to know. I've, I'd forgotten about the water problem. Um, but yeah, the water was, turns out the well wasn't, uh, didn't meet the specifications and so. We had to redo that and haul the water, so hopefully people can be, uh, conservation minded there. We had a meeting this week, uh, with Terry and, and code enforcement, uh, on some zoning and code issues out on, on, uh, Lund Highway and, uh, working through some issues there. And it's just a constant, kind of a constant battle to, to balance that. We met a meeting this week with, uh, Amber Hatch, our weed supervisor. Trying to find her a home. Uh, we've got a.
For the weed department.
Uh, she's got a house. We just, yeah, for the weed, sorry. Thanks for the clarification. But, uh, we've need to, we need to, uh, we're looking to maybe add on a, a bay on the north end of the old road shed building and pour a apron out front with a washout. We've got to have a washout for her chemicals and we've got a pipe that's piped over to a clay, uh, basin that we drain oil and all that stuff into, and it's lined with clay, so it doesn't perk into the, into the soil. So, um, that's, that'll work good right there if we can make that happen. We're gonna, we're kind of getting some, um, I called Ron Larson, who's a local engineer. He's always been good to help us with drawings and stuff and he's designing, he's going to meet, reach out to Seal Building Systems, um. And see about what it would cost to add a, a small addition to that building on that north end. And Terry's been good to help us with that as well. I had a Zoom call with Candace Reed, our, our, um, uh, public defend, defender system and attorneys and, and all those things to make sure we're up to, up to, up to speed with all of that. That was good. She does a good job for us. Appreciate her. We had a meeting, last commission meeting, after commission meeting with Rocky Mountain Power. They're building a main transmission line from, uh, out by Three Peaks down to Purgatory. It won't have any, it's just a main line and it's, it's going to be a huge project. It's probably about a ten-year. Total plan, uh, about half of that is just getting permits and, and figuring out the, the location where they can go through and get the easements and proper, proper thing there. But it'll be good when they get that done because in a power outage with the other line, they can backfeed power, back up that line and feed Iron County, so that'll be a, a good thing for growth and, and for our power needs here. Um, and then that meeting that Ken mentioned with Representative Malloy was really good. It was out to Iron Springs and, and, um, she, she's, she does a good job and, and was really responsive to different questions that came up, um, regarding the inland port as well as some ag questions and other things that came up. We appreciate her service and what she does for us. Um. And that's all I have.
Just have one more thing really quick. I looked, we talked about the, uh, new terminal expansion at the airport. That ribbon cutting will be a week from today on May fifth, so.
What time?
I think it's at nine, let me look and make sure. Uh, nine, nine AM at the airport. Well, that might be a lie. I have it in at both nine and twelve.
Hopefully twelve.
I think it's twelve.
I bet it's twelve.
I think I stuck it in at nine as a placeholder and then I actually got the actual invite, so it's going to be at twelve.
Okay, very good. Thanks for that reminder.
Back in town by then.
And I might be out of town that day. Okay, well, if that's everything for now, we'll, uh, adjourn until 10 o'clock. Thank you.
Ready?
Yeah.
Thank you, Adam.
We got the, where they're going to take a survey of the people, we got that deboshed. All the treasures are out the ladder.
So we've got a hot mic.
Signed.
Okay.
And the governor referred to that, I guess he was talking to a UAC Friday afternoon. Yeah, okay.
So, hey, we got hot mics.
Oh.
Yeah. Okay, that, okay, what?
So, so what's he?
We're not sure, we're never.
Okay. We good?
Yeah.
Thank you, John. We'll resume our 10 o'clock Iron County Commission meeting. We appreciate those that have joined us. In this meeting, we'll go to agenda item number one, which is public comments. Three-minute time limit per speaker for public comments. Should not repeat other comments, only for items not on the agenda. If anyone would like to speak, seeing none. We will now convene as Iron County Community Development and Renewal Agency and go to item number two, consideration of tax increment reimbursement for the Buckhorn, Burl, Cedar Valley, Fiddler's Canyon, Solar CRA, Sun Edison Phase One, Red Hills, Three Peaks, Granite Mountain East, Granite Mountain West, Iron Springs, Enterprise, Cove Mountain, and Cove Mountain Two, solar community development project area for the 2024 year. And I don't see David here.
I can speak to it. So these are, these are the annual reimbursement requests of the existing solar. And so on, so this first one here, this is Buckhorn, and you can see on the screen, it's a 50% increment for 10 years. This will be the last year for Buckhorn, it looks like. And we, what we do is we verify that the agency is entitled to receive the increment payments, that we've received the actual payment. The operating, the facility continues to operate. The proof of that is the receipts from the utility company, that they've paid their taxes, and that they are requesting their increment share, which in this case is 50%. So that's this particular one. And then we've got Burl, which is similar. It was actually done at the same time. Cedar Valley, which is also similar, and if you'll notice, it's a, wherever my mouse is, that's a 10-year increment, 50%. Fiddler's Canyon is another one of those, and that's 38.5, and that goes through 2028. This is Sun Edison Phase One, which is another one of the, the small ones early on had 10-year increment for, and 50%, 50%. So, and then the big ones all pretty much look like this. So this was the, this is Red Hills Renewable. This is the one here in Parowan Valley. So it's about 340,000 solar panels. It's 80 megawatts, 630 acres, 15 years of increment, and it goes until 2029. And David has verified that all of these are meeting the requirements as outlined. These requirements come from the project area plan. So there's quite a few documents that come through when, when a big solar farm gets put into place, but the project area plan dictates the terms of the increment, the rebate that happens. And what they do is they pay their taxes. Most of it is personal property, which is the actual equipment and stuff. And then they get the, they get the increment based on the growth over what it was when they started. So most of them started as like green belt, and so there's the value from, from that up until the, you know, the completion of the project. And that is what they call the growth. And then they get a rebate on the incremental growth. They don't get a rebate on what the value was before, but it's very minimal. And then they all have a schedule. And so in the case of Red Hills, this is 2015 to 2029. It was 15 years, 70%. We've had a lot of internal discussion about this. I think we're going to try and bring you some more information broadly on solar, and try and really pin down what our experience has been on solar as more people are wanting to come to Iron County, so that the commissioners can make a decision. But today's item is simply to approve or not the increment as outlined in the project area plans that Iron County Redevelopment and Renewal Agency has already agreed to. This is basically making, making sure that they check off all of these boxes, you know, that they develop the facilities, that the fees have been paid, the ad valorem taxes have been paid, the compliance with the conditional use permit.
And we know that all this has been done.
Yeah, and, and so, and so David, and it's kind of too bad he's not here, but David goes through all that before that comes to a commission. So all of these criteria are met, and then we actually, I'll actually, we'll get him to you to sign, but each one of these is a form. And so there'll be a spot for the chair to sign, and a spot for the secretary of the Iron County Community and Redevelopment Agency. And we, before any And we, before any reimbursement is paid, we make sure that all those boxes are checked. And that's.
I know you had a question, John, seems like in our last meeting, um, when they have to replace a solar panel.
Yeah, I've never gotten an answer on that.
Haven't?
I, I don't think they want to. I, I, I think from an accounting perspective, it would be a nightmare. But I, I do feel strongly because of the, of the aggressive depreciation schedule that they benefit from, uh, that, uh, that any panels that are replaced need to start over on that schedule. You know, if you've got three hundred and forty thousand panels on an eighty megawatt project and you replace ten thousand of them, that's fairly significant from our perspective because one of the things that happened after a lot of these came online was that change to how they were valued.
We have a right to audit.
I'm not sure how that works. They're not centrally assessed, so they're actually, um, assessed by our, um. Got the HVAC guys there. They're, they're assessed by our auditors, our assessor's office, um, but a lot of it is self-reporting, and so I don't know, like on personal property. What we can do, that's really a question for Carston, and I don't know, I'm not sure how that looks. It's a good question, though, because that might expose some of that. But again, Nicole standing up.
Teresa said she's actually talked to the tax commission about them coming down and auditing our solars, but they have kind of been reluctant, not had an appetite to come down and do it. That might be something we want to talk to the tax commission, maybe next week, about seeing why they're hesitant to come and do an audit, so.
I think it'd be beneficial. Very beneficial of us.
Looks like they had to replace a belt. But anyway, so this is kind of a separate deal. This is, this is something that, that, uh, the renewal, the Iron County Agent Development Renewal Agency has agreed to. So this is the case where they have to apply by April first, and they've done that, um, and then they actually pay this, um, in May, and so it, they'll, they, they, they will get the reimbursement now about eleven months later, um, from, because that's the schedule for personal property.
So we're, we're basically, we have an agreement, and as long as they meet all the criteria, we're obligated.
Yes, and David wouldn't bring this forward if they hadn't.
Okay.
And this, so this, and this, so, um, Danny Stewart and I kind of developed these forms, um, so that we could identify the criteria of each project, um, the dates and everything, and, and actually have a record that we, we have a record for every year's reimbursement that happens so that we, what we found, what we found was that some agencies will just pay out the increment without asking any questions. And we're like, well, we need to at least make sure that they're, I mean, it's not complicated, not compared to other, you know, like LENS, the LENS, um, redevelopment area is way more complicated than this because it's just, are you operating, is it built, have you paid your taxes, with a few variations. Um, and so these are quite simple, but we do have a record every year of having gone through this, and exercise is the wrong word, but this double check and then approval by the agency, um, for that increment for each year. And it's actually been good. It catches, if they're not following through, um, then, you know, because we've had some that weren't in operation quite yet or whatever, and they want, you know, reimbursement, but we want to make sure that we're holding their feet to the fire, and that's what this is about. Kind of the tail end of that process. Right.
So. So we just need to, need a motion and vote on it?
I would move for approval of tax rate, tax increment reimbursement for the Buckhorn, Burl, Cedar Valley, Fiddler's Canyon, Solar CRA, Sun Edison Phase One, Red Hills, Three Peaks, Granite Mountain East, Granite Mountain West, Iron Springs, Enterprise, Cove Mountain, and Cove Mountain Two, Solar Community Development Project Area for the twenty twenty-four year.
Second, Doc.
Been moved in second and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, thank you. We will now reconvene as the Iron County Commission and go to, uh, gen item number three, discussion and possible approval of the yearly fraud risk assessment for year ending two thousand twenty-four. Lucas Little, our auditor.
Good morning. So in light of our audit coming up, um, not this week, but next week, so Monday morning, we'll have, um, Kimball and Roberts Accounting Firm, um, out of Monroe, Richfield area, they'll be here doing our, uh, annual audit. And so they come for a couple of days, um, meet with a couple of different departments, go through all of our accounting ledgers, assets, um, review payments we've made, payments we've received, and, and do our audit, um, put together the financial statements, and then we submit those to the state, um, by the end of June. So there is this fraud risk assessment that we also submit to the state every year. So pretty, you know, something we do every year. The only change this year from last year, um, was the very last item, uh, which says, does the entity have a formal audit committee? Um, we have had one in the past. The last time they met was in twenty twenty-one, when we were getting a new, um, accounting firm to do our audit. Um, we had used a different one previously, and we had put it out to bid, got a new one, and they admit to discuss that. Um, I want to get it a little more formal and meet with them at least once, maybe twice a year, talk about how the county's doing, see if the committee thinks we should do audits of any certain departments within the county, and then also talk about the accounting firm we're using to do our audit as well. Um, I think we do have contract with Kimball and Roberts through next year, and then we may be putting out to bid to get a new one after that. Um, so I didn't feel it would be probably a hundred percent appropriate marking that, um, but our score overall still is in the low category. Um, we do have a separation of duties between mainly my office and the treasurer's office, um, with multiple employees being involved. We have different employees that do our accounts payable versus the accounts receivable, and then, um, another one that does payroll, and then the treasurer's office, they reconcile all of the bank accounts. So my office is receiving and paying money, but then their office is watching the bank statements, reconciling them, and approving checks and payments as well. Um, so we do have that, uh, separation of duties and overall a low risk. So, yeah, that's our, our fraud risk assessment. We'll upload this on the state website, um, so that's required to be done every year. Any questions on that?
No.
Okay.
Okay, so I entertain a motion to approve that.
Make a motion to approve, um, yearly fraud risk assessment for year ending twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Been moved in second and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Kerry, thank you. And Luke, number four, discussion of possible approval of the twenty twenty-five Iron County fee schedule.
Okay, also kind of in relation to our audit, um, we have a fee schedule that is posted on the website for all the different departments throughout the county, um, like the clerk's office, they have passports, marriage licenses, and what those fees are, um, our planning and zoning for building permits, they have a lot of different fees, um, the fair department with renting out the building, um, just different, different things like that. Um, so this, several pages, seven pages with all the different departments listed, um, services they provide and what their, uh, relating fees are. The last time this was approved was in twenty twenty-two, and when the auditors come, uh, they always ask if we reviewed this fee schedule and kind of updated it, have it on our website, make sure it's available to the citizens, and make sure it's, you know, not, uh, super old and it is updated. So we'll probably update this every two, three years, just at least email all the departments, make sure their fees are still correct. Um, August, in my office, she did this, so she reached out to all the different departments, got their updated, um, fees, some of them had no changes, some of them had changes, and then some of them, um, had services maybe they weren't offering before. Like with the fair, they weren't, didn't have as many options or details, um, that they have now included. So, so, yeah, we have that all, all updated, and, um, once that approval, we'll have it on the website. Yeah. Any questions on that? If there's anything specific you want to reach out to that department head for, um, and I don't have all the details and reasoning on some of them, but.
Look, I should know this, but do we know where this is on the website?
Um. I don't know right off the top of my head, but.
Find it while you're talking, how's that?
Okay.
Say again? Okay.
Yeah, so his, on his part of the website, it probably just has his section. There is another section where it has everything listed, but we'll update, I'll have Jaeger update your section and then the master list as well.
Okay. Awesome.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve. Twenty-five Iron County Fee Schedule.
Second.
Been moved in second and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, thank you. Luke, I signed up. Thank you. Uh, number five, discussion of possible approval of a contract for janitorial custodial services for the Iron County facilities in Parolin and Cedar City. Terry.
Good morning, commissioners. I think John has included this with your stuff because I gave him the packet last week to get it on the agenda. We have discussed this before with our many complaints from the different apartments and buildings that we maintain and try to keep clean with, in a contract, this current contract that we are under right now, we have issued, it was about sixteen months ago, I think. They promised the world to us, and they have not stepped up to give us half of what Iron County. So we've had lots of complaints, I've got a couple more complaints. Our biggest complaints are in critical areas that are regulated, behind locked doors, public safety building, nine-one-one, highway patrol, APMP, driver's license. We've got many complaints from them and justice courts, they're just not doing the cleaning that we have right now on the current one. So we put an RFP out two weeks ago, listed it at the state website, the county website, posted it at the courthouse here, and posted at the courthouse or the justice center in Cedar, and we had three, three bids come back in to us from three different companies after following the RFP request requirements. We had one from May, perfectly clean, one from Crystal Clean, and then one from Real Clean Janitorial. The prices varied quite a bit from there. The current contract we have right now for cleaning is for an annual is a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars for the year. The next, the three that come in currently, the low bid was a hundred and thirty-three thousand, just shy of a hundred and thirty-four thousand, I think. Didn't bring my glasses, sorry, Mike. Uh, no, sorry, just shy of a hundred and thirty-nine thousand from Crystal Clean. Per, made perfectly clean is a hundred and fifty-six thousand, and then Real Clean is a hundred and seventy-eight thousand for the year. Uh, as we talked before, services are going up, cleaning, everything's going up, supplies and stuff going up, but we, with a dissatisfaction of all the people we have that were cleaning from all of our buildings, the five buildings, we've got the justice center, public safety building, the visitor's center, office building, if the visitor's center, public safety in this courthouse here, we got the buildings, we have not been getting the services we need. The current company has called in many nights and not shown up some, set many nights, they've called and had Thane and Landon try to take care of some issues, repel the stock stuff that the current company is just not taking care of.
Now, see, um, we met with this, um, current contracted on January seventh of this year. The contract had been in place for several months at that time, and we'd had some complaints. We met with them in person. Again, they were very enthusiastic about what they could offer, uh, but at that time we did say, um, really it just can't keep happening, and, uh, it has continued to happen. So from our contract perspective, we believe we've given them an adequate opportunity to cure, and that's not come to fruition, so.
Thank you, Sam.
Sam, how does that work when, uh, we have these companies clean like your office, where it's sensitive, you know, that information and things that are, I mean, how, how does that work?
So, um, right now, our liaison is Lori Eichelberger at the justice court. She takes care of all of the background stuff, um, because that's, uh, well, does the sheriff office have one as well?
Sheriff, sheriffs is under their own, I think Mike and them take care of their own house, I'm not sure if they have somebody else.
Basically, any employee this company brings, they have to get a background check to be cleared, to work in those sensitive locations. So the attorney's office has actually requested that these companies not clean in our office because, uh, the turnover was so high, it was becoming cumbersome, so we, we clean our own office, but the rest of the justice court building is, is cleaned by this company, and they have to go through background checks with Lori, and the same for the sheriff's office.
So do you still plan to clean your own office?
Correct, yeah.
And so are they bidding their office or not?
Their, their office is out of it, they did not, was not part of the contract.
So we're not paying for it if we're not cleaning?
So I, I met with Lori earlier, uh, last week, I, I ran into her and had this same conversation, and she indicated that they were going to probably start cleaning their own office as well.
They have talked about that, but, but with the turnover that the current company has, they've had so much turnover. With the new company, one of the new one that we would propose, they are right now cleaning, doing cleaning services at the senior center in Cedar, and Stephanie there is pleased phenomenally with that. Jennifer, I think, has visited with them too. Everybody's very happy with their cleaning services now that, and they've promised us that they wouldn't have the turnover. So Lori says we, she would give them six months to get everything worked out if we do change, and then if it doesn't work out, we would take Lori's out of the contract services there, which Lori's, the attorneys. The highway patrol, APMP. Time I remember, they all have to have the background screening done. If Lori backs out and they do their own services into their justice courts, then we'd have to turn the con, the background screening over to Jan and Lee at the highway patrol through them, and they would have to do the background screening for us.
So where we have an increase in our cleaning, uh, do we pass that, like for the public safety building, do we pass that along to the tenants?
Yes, that is part of their cleaning, I think that con is part of their contract that's additional.
Can that contract be, be modified midstream, or does that, do we have to wait till it comes up for renewal or?
We can approach, uh, our people that lease from us about amending, it would have to be with their approval. And I think there's some precedent to be had for making those types of amendments. Uh, sometimes we write it in, I'm not sure if we have it in all of them.
Yeah, we, just going through the books at the end of the year, um, getting ready for our audit, looking at the rent we receive for the different buildings, I think we need to go through and maybe update a couple of them, see if we can increase that revenue for this reason. I mean, we've done a lot of repairs, we replaced the floor in that building, um, bunch of conduit, and, and so it's been the same, I don't know, for several years, at least, at least the last five years. So that was one thing I wanted to plan on this year is getting that rent updated.
The most recent lease agreement we have with juvenile probation in the fifth district court, uh, across from our offices, they have a graduated scale. We've already contemplated increased rent from them. It's the same for this year, this coming year, but then after that it goes up, and then it'll stay the same after so many years. But, yeah, that, that's something that we can address with other agreements.
Yeah, the, and the main one I was looking at was the, um, public safety building behind the jail. The other ones aren't too big a deal, but.
What was? I mean, I know during budget time, we contemplated the benefits of continuing with contracted services versus just bringing everything in-house. Have you, or where would we, and I think we said, if I remember right, I'm just off the top of my head, that we'd kind of visit that mid-year and see where things were. What's, what do you think?
When I looked at the nut, just numbers wise, it was pretty close. I mean, it was still more favorable to contract it out. I mean, especially starting up where we'd have to buy equipment, especially if we did the lawns, we'd have to buy mowers and that. But, yeah, I think.
Then you've got the headache of staffing and tiring and.
Right.
And then you gotta.
Turnover and all that.
My feeling is, I, and, well, if it got crazy enough to look it up, I don't know, otherwise it just. My feeling is, I, and, well, if it got crazy enough to look it up, I don't know, otherwise, it just seems like these, you create a department like that and it kind of grows and.
Grows, right.
And we have talked about that, that that is a big concern there with trying to keep people hired right now, especially government, they say it's not the best place to work for anymore, but I think it still offers enough that I, I'm with Luke right now. I don't know that it pencils out to go through and change it over just yet. I know that our increase right now would be about forty thousand dollars if we go to the company we would prefer to go to. And through that, the one company that is on here and I'll.
Which, which one, so?
Perfectly Made is the middle range one.
Is one fifty-six?
Is that one fifty-six?
So you're one fifty-six minus the one fourteen?
Yeah.
Yeah, and it'd be about forty more. So we'd have to do a budget adjustment for that increase for this year.
For this year.
But with that increase, it would make it even closer or a lot, maybe even a little better to hi, to hire employees instead of contracted out with that increase. But I think over the next year or two, and depending on how this new company does, then we could really look at it and see. I mean, if we don't have good luck with them, then it's.
They furnish the supplies for that price?
Three times already?
Toilet paper, towels?
We do a lot of the papers, stuff, we do a lot of the supplies. They do supply some of their own supplies with it.
Okay.
So we would have to look at the contract. I can't remember how it was exactly written in here, but we do supply the paper, a lot of the cleaning, actual cleaning stuff.
They just do the labor and, and their cleaning chemicals, or do we even furnish all that, the cleaning chemicals?
I don't know on this one how we've got this one written, but we do supply some of the cleaning stuff because we know what we want for our appliances and our stuff there. So it might be worth looking at this year at budget to see how they do and where we fit, fall in because I'm pretty sure that the prices would go up again next year, just how things are going. So we might look at that in budget mid-year um, before we start our budget process and see where we're at and what they think they're at in timeline. If they do a good job, if they keep up where they are with the Senior Center, we should be pleased because, like I said, Stephanie is very pleased. They promised us that they've got the staff. They will have staff. They've given us a breakdown that they will have a minimum of two people in each building, and public safety, they will put four people, I think, in that building. So we have more accountability for what is getting done in each of the buildings with this company. Whereas right now, we're lucky to see one, three nights a week, four nights a week, maybe.
How often do they clean?
They're supposed to clean five, minimum five nights, so that it's cleaned Monday morning through Friday. We don't, we don't dictate if they have to come in Friday, Saturday, or Sunday night, but every Mon, Monday to Friday morning, that building's to be cleaned, ready for business.
And is the, I, I assume that the one, that the company that is going to be recommended is the one with the, with the recommendation from Council on Aging?
Yes, it is. Yeah. And I will go over these just a little bit if you would like. The bottom, the low, the low bid we have is they, they bid before.
With us before. They have cleaned with us before and under different ownership. We don't feel that they have changed, after talking with them on this walkthrough, that they have changed with what they feel they want to do. It's, there's some question there because the company has been around. They did it before, and they did not do a good job before. The middle, the top company, he's a newer company in town, might be okay, but I don't know that he has the staff for it right now. He's just started up new from working from another business that is, is extremely high. He's at a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars for the year, a hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. The Perfectly Made, like I said, they are the middle range one there. They have worked with the COA, the Senior Center in Cedar. Stephanie's very pleased. I think Jennifer's talked with her. We have talked with her, and she's been very, they've been very pleased with the cleaning there, and they've, they've written out a very detailed program with what they would do for us on that one. So that is my recommendation, uh, is that we look at Made Perfectly Cleaning with a annual contract dollar amount of a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. I think that breakdown is how it breaks down into their estimate, their writing in their contract there. And then we would work with Sam and the attorney's office to get a better contract written up for.
The tenants.
Yeah. Trying to figure out the politically, how to put it in there so that it's if they're not show up, if they don't do the job, that we have some recourse to come back on them. But it's with the current contract, we do not.
Um, and I wonder too, Sam, if it might not hurt to do like a CIP, like a, a CPI, excuse me, adjustment each year, kind of write that in, even if we don't necessarily, I know that, um, you know, a lot of landlords will do that, and they'll just, they'll make it, they'll make an adjustment to rent based on the CPI each year, Consumer Price Index. Um, if we want to go that far, or if we want to do maybe just a one-time where you're, you're like, hey, listen, I know that like the public safety building, y'all had to do a lot of, you know, extra work and.
Yeah, public safety is, that's a different, different project there.
But, but you know, there's, but that's what I'm saying is, you've got floors, you've got things that have to be replaced.
Well, and it is, and that, that might be an option to look at to see if they, if they do keep up with it and we just carry on with it, we can do that. But a lot of the things in the public safety are not janitorial stuff that we've had issues with this year.
But the janitorial and maybe some sinking funds for floors and paint and.
Yep.
Things.
Yeah, and we do have that with the public safety in their contract to have extra put out for that.
Remember having that.
But I think we need to work, like Luke says, we need to work with new contracts on some of our leases that we have in our buildings.
Great.
Okay.
Remind me the name of that.
A perfectly.
A perfectly cleaning. Anna Hera is the owner.
Hundred fifty-six K? Is that even?
Yeah. When I calculated it out, it'd come out a hundred and fifty-six thousand. I think that was even. Half of it's been erased, so. It was month, the monthly one would be thirteen thousand. So, yeah, a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars.
Okay. All right, I'd move for approval of contract for janitorial custodial services for the Iron County facilities in Perrone and Cedar City awarded to Made Perfectly Cleaning in the amount of one hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars annually.
Second that motion.
It's been moved in second and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thanks, Terry.
Appreciate it.
We should all your work on that.
We will see if we can get it better and less complaints. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Jennifer, we'll go to personnel.
Good morning. Yes. Um, in the Sheriff's Office Patrol, Ryan Turk has been selected from an internal posting and interview process to receive a promotion from a full-time patrol deputy three to a full-time patrol corporal beginning four twenty-seven, twenty twenty-five. In patrol as well, Michael Sanner has completed all tasking requirements to receive a promotion from a full-time patrol deputy one to a full-time patrol deputy two beginning four twenty-seven, twenty twenty-five. In Sheriff's Office Corrections, Eddie Garcia was selected from the most recent competitive interview and selection process to backfill the vacant full-time corrections deputy one position effective four twenty-seven, twenty twenty-five. And Braxton Wilson has passed the required testing to receive bilingual pay effective April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five. In the Road Department, Michael Del Campo was selected from the most recent competitive interview and selection process to backfill the vacant full-time maintenance technician one position effective four twenty-eight, twenty twenty-five. Also in Roads, Keenan Emily has completed all tasking requirements to receive a promotion from a full-time maintenance worker two to a full-time maintenance worker three beginning four twenty-seven, twenty twenty-five. And in the Weed Department, Staley Webster was selected from the most recent competitive recruiting and interview process to backfill the vacant seasonal weed technician, weed sprayer technician position effective four twenty-eight, twenty twenty-five.
Okay. Any questions on personnel? Not all entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the personnel changes in the out, in the, uh, in the agenda.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Jennifer. County boards. We, I know Dennis Gray, um, we approved him, and he was at the last planning commission meeting, so he's up and going. We appreciate him serving there and, um, I know we have a, a little administrative meeting after this meeting that we need to talk about a couple administrative things, but other than that, I think, anything else? I think we're good. Chair declares this meeting adjourned. Thank you.